Okay, it's nine o'clock. We're meeting in the central jury room at the Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street. The meeting is now called to order. Would you please rise for the invocation and the pledges?
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this glorious day. Just forgive us of our sins. Guide this court. Give us wisdom and knowledge to better serve the public. Just be with us through these days. Upper level of government, Lord, just guide them and give them knowledge so that they can better serve this country. Please bring us rain. Forgive us for our sins. In the name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the pledge of Texas.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, Bob, we have special presentations this morning.
Judge Commissioners, we're here to celebrate some anniversaries with some of our employees. The first one is for Robert Young, who works in the DA's office, and he's been with the county now for 15 years.
Robert Young.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
And next is Glenda Barber, who works in the tax assessor collector office, and she's been with the county for five years. I don't think she's here. I think she's working.
Yep.
And next is Kathy Jevanen, who is supervisor in our dispatch area, and Kathy's been with the county for five years. Next is TD Ehlum, and he's been with the county for five years, and I think he's out doing his job. The next is April Rodriguez. She works in the dispatch area, and April's unavailable, but we'll make sure she gets her pen, and that's 10 years' service with the county. And the next is one of our celebratories, Gay Johnson. She's been with the county for 25 years.
Wow. Should've started with Gay. Bless your heart, Gay.
You want to come down here? Danny Tuggle.
Who?
Danny Tuggle.
Okay.
The last person to get their award today is one of our justices of peace, Danny Tuggle, and he's been with the county now for five years.
Rapid rise.
Hello, Danny.
There you go, take that.
Thank you.
Give me a hand.
Is that it, Bob?
That's it, sir.
All right. Real good. Does any citizen have any...want to make any comments about any agenda item? If so, sheriff has a form. Just raise your hand, or stand up, or do whatever. Tony, do you need something, or are you just scratching your head?
[laughing]
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Right now, we are going in to move Rob up. Is Rob here, or did he have to go?
He had to leave.
Oh, okay. Well, his trial started. He wanted to be on first, so anyway. All right. The next item is business development and compliance.
Morning, Judge Cochrane, Commissioners. First agenda item, we'd like to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the replat of lots 7R, 8R, and 9R-1, and 10R-1 in Fountain Village. It's located in precinct number three. It's...the reason for replat at this time is just to move some setback lines and to rearrange some lot lines. Staff recommends that you set the public hearing to consider this replat on the March 11th Commissioners Court Meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action to replat of lots 7R, 8R, 9R-1, and 10R-1 at Fountain Village for 311. Who made the motion? Jeff Toutt made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action. Appointment of Mike McKean for place four on the Hood County Development Commission. Go ahead.
Judge, on January 22nd, the Development Commission met and considered Mike McKean for place four on the Development Commission. This was...place four has become vacant due to Alva Cox becoming the chairman of the Development Commission, and place four is representing precinct number four, Steve Berry's precinct. After reviewing the appointment, the Development Commission does recommend to the Commissioners Court that we appoint Mike McKean to place four on the Hood County Commissioners...on the County Commissioners...on the Commissioners Development Commission.
I thought we were replacing Steve there for a minute.
I do.
I would like...so moved.
It's not that easy, is it?
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
That is replacing the commissioner, right?
No.
Okay.
All right. Budget and finance. Consider budget line item amendments.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There's one budget line amendment that is being requested this morning. It's from Tim Flower, the Building and Services Facilities Manager, asking to move $300 out of supplies and into the uniforms area. Got a couple of new hires. That's the only budget amendment I've been made aware of this morning, but we would ask your approval for that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about staying on this? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve these budget line item amendments.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Toutt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Stan?
Judge, as far as the expenditures are concerned this morning, you've already, in your consent agenda, agreed to allow the treasurer to pay the fees that are due to comptroller, and those are not to exceed $160,000. In addition to that, the scheduled payments come to $2,847,748.07. A little over 90% of that is for the scheduled principal and interest payments on the county's bonded debt, and those are to Bank of America, N.A., $941,114.50; to Bank of Texas, $1,122,932.25; and to JP Morgan Chase Bank, $327,292.88; and to the Bank of New York Mellon, $211,396.88. The larger regular bills to be paid, there's a scheduled payment to Baird, Hampton, and Brown. That is for site development charges for the animal control site, $10,150. An internal transfer to the Indigent Defense Accounting Fund 112. That's just transferring money from one fund to the other, $47,347.12. For postal meter recharge to Pitney Bowes, $40,000. To Somerville County for out-of-county inmates, $19,570. And those are the larger items that are on your one-page summary. I've given the court a payment warrant for every item on the detailed list. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have to ask about them, but we would ask that you approve these bills to be paid.
Anybody have any questions for staying on the bills?
Just one. To Dr. Bishop, how many cases do we know? How many cases with either that or the Tarrant County Medical Examiner for $7,000 bucks that that involves?
As far as Dr. Bishop is concerned, I think we'd have to ask the sheriff about that. I know there's a flat fee.
Yeah.
And in addition to that, there would be some individual charges.
I'm more interested, really, in the Tarrant County Medical Examiner.
It's probably about four, because they normally run about 2,000 each, so...
For autopsies?
Yeah.
Well, the physical exams under...for Dr. Bishop are $150 each, and those are for three, and then I believe the flat fee is $4,031.25 for the...
Tarrant County.
Let's see. Tarrant County Medical Examiner. JP 2 has one for $2,250. JP 1 has one for $2,445. And JP 3 has one for $2,250.
I noticed our funds may not last through the year the way we're going.
Yes, sir. It might be good for the court to have a workshop and hear from the justices of the peace about that. I know that we're spending more as a county on autopsies than we have before.
And as we grow, that's going to be logical that we do.
Yeah.
So I think that's...I do think that's going to cause for a workshop to be discussed because there's some potential problems coming there.
If I read it right, I think we're nearly 50% into it now.
Yes, sir, and we're certainly not halfway through the year.
Four months into the year. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to ratify paying the bills.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roy.
Can you second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Why, Commissioner Roan? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Rob, you want to come on up? This is item three, A and B, I believe. Isn't that right, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Consider and take appropriate action to approve purchase from Fund 55 on computer scanners for the DA's office.
All right. We...I've been before you a few weeks ago discussing this online discovery project that we have with Net Data. One thing that's come to light as a result of this project is how antiquated some of our computers in the DA's office are. I recently upgraded one of our computers out of forfeiture funds, purchased a scanner for $2,500. That computer actually was in the old courthouse and was eight or nine years old. What I'm asking for is to upgrade two other computers in the DA's office and purchase two scanners. One scanner will be shared by others in the DA's office, and then I have, of course, David Tucker at the Law Enforcement Center of the Sheriff's Office, like to have a scanner in his office, too, so that he can perhaps scan some of this discovery in as he is doing intake, as those cases come in to the DA's office, since really, he's the first person in the DA's office that touches that stuff. So that's what I'm asking for. The cost is $5,181.2. I've decided to make this request after consulting with the IT Department, asked them to evaluate the two computers, the two older computers in the office, to see if they could effectively run this software, do what we needed them to do, and it was after their counsel and their recommendation that I'm making this request.
Anybody have any questions with Rob on this?
Jackie, are you aware of these computers need to be replaced? Was that in your master budget plan this summer?
It is in the master for as far as the computer replacement, and we do recommend these two units to be replaced. The scanners are a little bit, you know...I think that's something that we're having to take on additionally as we move through, and we're trying to adhere to some of these new rules and regulations that we have to follow.
That's mandated.
So we have to kind of, you know, flex a little bit with that, but we definitely recommend both of these units and the scanners as well, and these scanners are compatible with the system.
Yes, my question would be, you know, who else has to have discovery? Does the county attorney have to have discovery? Does the...I mean, who else has to have discovery that the state's passed down to us that...
Lori says yes.
Lori, I think...
But she'll be back next week.
No, I think she was before me, actually.
She was last week.
She was last time. But I will say this, it is an outlier and an expense, but I do think that there are going to be some benefits in terms of efficiency. For one thing, you know, we won't have to have these lawyers in our office using our copy machine, wear and tear on that paper and the rest of it, and just putting up with them in the office while they're copying these files. You know, we won't have them in there. They'll be able to do that all online. And when it comes to managing these files in the DA's office, instead of having to pull this file, and is this file in Rob's office, or is it in, you know, Megan's office, or, you know, or Suzie's office, having all this online, I think will increase the efficiency of the DA's office. As technology often does, I think we'll be able to do better work, more work, with the same amount of people. So I...
So that negates you doing item B, then? Is that what you're saying?
No. Item B is the same amount of people, but why don't we move on?
Well, let's approve this one first, or turn it down?
All right.
Does...I have...is anyone want to make a motion to approve this purchase for $1,181.2 out of Fund 55?
Is it 1,000 or 5,000?
5,000.
5,181.02, right?
I'll make the motion to approve that portion.
I'll second it because what we did with the county attorney, we're going to have to do this, obviously, but, I mean, you have to like it, but you've got to do it.
Unfunded mandate. All right. Then wait a minute, Rob. Any further discussion on this item? Have a motion and a second? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, item B.
All right. When I began in the DA's office over 10 years ago, I hired Pat Gressit to work as a secretary, and after 10 years of service, she retired last month. And this month, I've been...one of the tasks I've been charged with is replacing her. And I have talked with several folks and have conducted interviews. The person I would like to hire is an employee of the Sheriff's Department, Brandy Smith. I think a lot of you may know Brandy. She's worked for the county a long time. What I'm requesting is when I bring Brandy Smith in to replace or to fill that position, that instead of bringing her in at step one, that I bring her in at step six. And I'd like to talk with you, I guess, about two things. Number one, why I think that's a good idea, and number two, how we can afford it. Relating to why this is a good idea, Brandy brings with her expertise in the Spillman software system. I believe that there is efficiency and power in that system that is just untapped. As a dispatcher, she knows that system backwards and forward. She's done training and trained others for the Sheriff's Department on how to use that system. She also is a certified dispatcher, which doesn't have a huge impact in my office, but it does in the sense that she's licensed and certified to run the NCIC, TCIC computer systems for the criminal background checks. And then lastly, a big part of what I do, not just with jury trials, but with motions to suppress, and then also intake and investigation, is the relationship with the law enforcement officers in the county, not just the Sheriff's Department, but the Granbury Police Department, the Highway Patrol, and Brandy has a very good relationship with all those guys. And I'm not just talking about their supervisors, you know, the sergeant, or Mitch, or Roger Deeds, but the guys that I really need to talk to, you know, the patrol guys, the guys that are actually doing the work. And I think that that is something that I can't get any other place, that she brings because of her background, and that's why I think it should be done. And as far as the cost, in my budget, Pat was already a step nine. I'm asking that Brandy be a step six. There are savings there.
What classification is this?
CS3. CS3.
Okay.
And when you start asking me numbers, I'm going to answer you, but I want to invite Bob to interrupt and make sure I'm right. Brandy, I'm not...you know, the dispatchers are on a different...
Scale.
So...but as I understand it, Brandy is a supervisor of a shift at dispatch. To come to the DA's office, she's going to be taking, it's either a $14,000 or $16,000 pay cut to come to the DA's office. And surely, she's going to have to be replaced by the sheriff, but I think that she's not going to...he's not going to replace her with somebody in that same step. I think there's going to be some savings there. The way that I've figured it out, after talking with Bob at Human Resources or Personnel, is that when you add the savings in my office by losing that step nine, and add the savings in the Sheriff's Department by taking this tenured person out, I think it's about $7,000 a year, so about, I think...
So let me ask you a question.
Yes.
You're not adding a new employee.
No.
You're filling a position, and you're asking to use the step plan policy to go to six instead of...
Right.
Because you're not adding anybody new.
No.
Well, that's worried about.
No. Not adding anybody new.
Yeah, I was going... Because it says new employee, but it means new to your department.
Yes. Yes.
You're replacing an existing employee that left, and you're asking...
A lot easier, Rob.
All right.
You're asking somebody to move up the place scale from a CS-whatever to a CS6.
Right. Which I understand. I've got to have you guys approve that, and I can't just do it because I have the money. And, I mean, that's just part of it.
We have another one on the agenda just like that today.
So...but I think it's a huge win for me, and...
Rob, you didn't give us the bottom line there as far as how much does that reduce her loss in moving?
Reduce her loss? I'm not...
You said she's taking a $14,000 pay cut.
She just is. I think she doesn't want to work nights anymore, and she wants a change of pace.
All right.
And it's a different job.
I don't really want to talk about individual salaries out in open court like that, but I...just to move on, if it does fit the policy, is that not correct? And so she's leaving...she has HR experience, I believe, prior to going to the Sheriff's Department.
Yep.
And I don't know what your...I don't know what her job title's going to be, but I have...I mean, it's not a new employee. That was my concern.
Right.
Right.
Make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Jack.
Back to court.
Back to court.
All right. The next item is receive the report for the county attorney, item number one on miscellaneous, item C.
Thank you.
Let me first of all say, you know, thank you very much for all of your support this year. We implemented a lot of new policies. Been trying to run my office in an efficient manner, and part of my accountability is to report to you, so something that I'm doing today. This is...I'm going to start by just briefly talking about the fourth quarter, which this particular report covers October 1 to December 30. We had 742 new cases that were resolved, as you can see from the chart. That was through probation and then also through convictions and adjudications. We had...I will say that there's a correction on the fines and fees assessed. If you'll look at my chart, I got extra decimal points. I don't know what...on suspended fines, I'm in some other realm there. I don't know what that is.
Wish it were true.
I have $11,800.00.00. I have no idea what that means. I got a little crazy with the decimal points. The total should be, if my hand-calculated math is correct while I was listening to Rob, it should be 292,206.60. I got everything shifted over. It's one of the things I used to chide my students about. Should've checked my math. Just because it's on this little spreadsheet doesn't mean it's accurate. Garbage in, garbage out. In our civil division, we continue to have a pretty active civil division. The numbers are kind of misleading, because when you look at the criminal cases, there's hundreds and hundreds of criminal cases compared with fewer civil cases, but the civil cases take about 10 times as long as a criminal case.
Can I ask a question, Lori? Can we go back to that slide prior? Jackie, can you do that?
Yes, sir.
It said 292,774, something of that nature.
It said 299,774.65, and it should be, I think, 292,206.60.
So still 290...
I've shifted that $11,800 over.
290,000, is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay. Who else stand? Because this is always, you know, it gets brought up in budget time. Who else shows that fine? I mean, for example, the constable surf papers, the JPs do fines as well, and your county attorney's office prosecutes a lot. We see the same fines collected two or three different times in our budget, but in essence, they're only counted one time.
Well, this is not...
Is this only in your office, and this is only what came out of the CCL court or JP courts, that it was be collected through your office?
Only out of the county court at law. I don't keep track of whatever is assessed in the JP courts. And this is assessed, this is not collected. I have...we have no part of collecting. This is what we put on our papers, this is what people pled to, or what Judge Messina ordered as far as fines and fees.
Okay. So this is what is assessed, but when they go and they pay that...
That comes through the county clerk. So whatever Mary collects...
So this has nothing to do with probation fees that they collect in adult probation or juvenile probation as well?
No, sir.
Okay.
This is just what was assessed.
You answered my question, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Juvenile cases continue to be active on juvenile cases.
Next slide.
And then the next page, all new cases filed. We filed 267 new A and B misdemeanors and Class C appeals, six protective orders. We have about 10 pending right now. Apparently, Christmas season is...the holiday season was rough on families, and we have a lot of protective orders pending for this new quarter, way more than six that we did in the last quarter. Juvenile cases were fairly low this last time. Occupational licenses continue to be fairly high. Part of the reason that they went up from September is that they can now be filed in the JP courts. I am responsible for reviewing all of that when it comes in. I think Friday afternoon, it took me about four hours to review five applications, and I denied four of them. So it's pretty complicated law. 13 bond forfeitures. I will tell you that this year, at the request of the bond agents, we have started...my office has started prosecuting bail jumping, which we've always had the ability to do that, and it's...we've never really done it that much before. They asked me to...if I would do that on cases that warrant it when people skip bond, and so we've started doing that, hopefully to kind of put an end to that. If you look at the year-to-date numbers, you can see that...
Next slide.
A couple of slides down, I think. There you go. We stay pretty consistent with the number of cases we file, and of course, we can only file as many cases as come in to the office. I will tell you, I've made a concerted effort to not file cases that have accompanying felonies, where the underlying misdemeanor case is maybe a driving while license invalid, and then the person is stopped for possession of methamphetamine, or they fine methamphetamine on the defendant. I've been coordinating with David Tucker at the intake stage, talking to him and saying, if you're going to accept the felony case... case, I'm going to reject the misdemeanor case. So you'll see that our total numbers, in some cases, may be a little bit lower, but that prevents us from having to appoint a court-appointed attorney for a misdemeanor case that we're going to end up dismissing anyway. Been trying really hard to do that on a lot of those cases. You can see that we resolved quite a few cases this year. Again, fairly steady across the board as far as the cases that get pled out. Fines and fees assessed, again, that graph is, I'll submit a corrected version since I've got my total assessed in the fourth quarter, number incorrect. So that'll come down a little bit. New civil cases. If you look at our civil cases, you'll see that the majority of our cases are family violence protective orders and occupational driver's licenses. The CPS number is, has nothing for the first and second quarters because we were not doing CPS cases then. The number of new cases is a little bit deceptive because we've got about 60 active cases right now, which would shoot that number up quite high. But we've only filed 21 new cases since the beginning, since July 1. But we've got about 60 active cases and those are extremely time consuming.
Lori?
Yes, sir.
Question for me, just out of curiosity, under occupational driver's license.
Yes, sir.
What kind of case is that? I mean, why is, why is that involved in your office? Is that someone who is.
It's a civil case.
But somebody with an occupational license?
No, it's, it's someone who's applying for an occupational driver's license because their license has been suspended or revoked or canceled.
Okay.
And there's.
Yeah.
A bunch of crazy, crazy rules in the transportation.
I thought it was because there was already an offense involved.
No.
That's not.
Then that would be in the criminal.
Yeah, okay.
If they violate an occupational, that's a criminal offense. And then I want to skip down to our hot check division activity. My hot check division staff has been doing a great job of following up with all of these hot check riders that we've had. We have collected. A total for the year of sixty thousand, six hundred and six, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and nine cents in restitution. It's on the next slide. We have paid out forty-three thousand, two thirty-three, ninety-four to our Hood County merchants. And this is really a valuable service that we provide for the community. It, we try to keep people out of jail for this offense because we find that that our primary concern is to reimburse the merchants for the money that they're out, not to cost the county, because once we stick these people in jail, they they don't pay off at all. They lose their jobs and they don't pay. So we keep a pretty steady flow of money coming into the office to reimburse these merchants. And I'll answer any other questions that you have about this. I will be, I will submit a new graph and.
Still a good report.
And fees.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions for Lori?
The county.
Pardon?
We continue to be the busiest law office in the county.
We appreciate all you do for the county.
Thanks.
It's a good report.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the year-end report, or the, yeah, end-of-year report for the county attorney.
Second.
Who made the motion? Commissioner Dever made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Rome. Any further discussion? An all in favor? Opposed? The motion carried. Take appropriate action to appoint a board member for the Lake EDC Board, Commissioner Precinct Four.
Every January, Judge, it's time to reappoint a commissioner to the EDC. I've been on there six terms, and I'd like to nominate Jeff Taut to take my place.
Okay. Mr. Taut, are you willing to accept that?
Yes, second.
All right, a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Rome to reappoint Jeff Taut as a member of the Lake Granbury EDC Board. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next item is item number four, county court at law.
Your honor, we would, if we could, could we move that down the agenda a little bit? We're waiting on Ty Barmia. He's out doing something with the radio tower and the fire department.
How about taking number five then?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Number, hey, wait a minute, Judge. Number five.
That's a different one. That's all you.
Oh, okay.
That's all yours. You don't need anybody else for that one.
Morning. I don't need any backup on that. I sure don't. Okay, so item number four A.
Oh, five. Well, we're gonna, well, let's do four. If he's, if he's, if he's ready to do four, we'll do four.
I'm ready to do, I'm ready to do it all.
All right.
Yeah. I'm ready to do it all.
We'll get Ty next.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
On the Tyler, you're talking about on the Tyler amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. As everybody knows, the district clerk went to Tyler Odyssey. Tyler Odyssey maintains the records for my family law docket and for all the family law cases that are filed in the CCL. In order for my office to print a docket and then put that docket online, which is a service we provide to the local lawyers as well as the out-of-town lawyers, you can, there is an actual link on my website to pull criminal dockets, civil dockets, and family law dockets. In order to do that, we must be authorized users under the Tyler Odyssey system. There is a fund, which is the fund that zero seven three four seven four eight nine, is a record management fund, which in my opinion allows for us to have the two additional users for the Tyler system because it is a record manager. We are managing the records of the district clerk's office and we are publishing those records for attorney use and for court use. Okay? It's necessary for me to run dockets. It's necessary for my staff to be able to control the, the setting of the dockets. And in order to do that, we have to have access to the Tyler Odyssey program. We have to have not only access, we have to have a license agreement so we can use the program for the two people, Lindsay Stoudemire and Mickey Sharon, that will use the program. And we also have to receive some training in, in how to, in how to use their system, because Mickey and Lindsay do not have that training, have not received that training yet. And so that's item number four A for your consideration.
Let me ask a question. I know that there's some other things that could come up, maybe out of other departments, like coming out of the county attorney's office, that will you have to have, or are there going to be more of these licenses required? Is CPS going to be on Tyler?
CPS is on Tyler, your honor. At this time, I don't know why there would be any need for us to be on it. We don't, we don't book the, the cases. It's not, it's not important, I don't think, for us to get into that system and look at it. I would like to avoid that if at all possible. They do use Tyler, but you know, if we need something, we just go over to the clerk's office and ask.
Well, plus anybody from, I would think, that would be coming into your office that would need it would already have it from, from the judge's office.
But Judge Messina will not do CPS. Is that right? Or he, he will?
Going on the record to say and I will or I won't. I have a CPS case this afternoon, by the way, if you.
Well, I didn't know if he would need it then.
Kick on me about that. No.
I, I just don't think that we, you know, we don't do any docketing of cases like the judge's office does. You know, all of the family law cases get filed in the district clerk's office. And so that's where part of the problem is, because then half of them go to Judge Messina's court. All of the CPS cases get filed in the district court. They stay in the district court. The district court sends us a schedule of when the cases are scheduled. So I don't think, we don't need to actually put anything on the docket.
Okay, so the one.
Are you completely on net data then, in your office?
So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I guess I'm confused, Jackie. I mean, okay, I mean, I guess we won't have, I guess we'll never crash, but I mean, we got so many people in different systems. But I understand why Judge Messina needs the Tyler, because some of the things the district clerk's office does, I understand that part. But the district clerk doesn't do anything that's, that gets back to your level in county?
They do, but we don't have to actually schedule any dockets of cases.
How do you get the paperwork then, that she's inputting right now, that we had this big discussion about two weeks ago or during the workshop?
What paperwork?
On filings and so forth.
We don't have to file electronically with them as of right now.
Okay.
If we, if we end up doing that, that may be a different, I mean, I don't, I don't know. At this point, I don't see that we need it.
Well, see, the, the electronic filing is going to be required in the, in the district clerk's offices pretty soon.
Right, but you can do that without having.
Right.
Okay, let's do another system then.
Docketing.
Yeah, okay.
Different story. That's an originating document.
Okay.
See, what happens, I mean, just real briefly, I mean, I'm not going to belabor the point, but if a case is filed and they, and say a divorce with a temporary restraining order and a request for temporary orders, okay, that's the, that's a family law case, very typical. That case is filed in the district clerk's office, okay? It's docketed in the, in the 355th and the CCL, depending on when the last case was filed, because it's not random. It's one in the, one in the CCL, one in the 355th, one in the CCL, one in the 355th. That's how it, that's how it goes. And that's how the cases are split. And that's based on an agreement between Judge Walton and I, okay? All right. So all of the family law cases are filed in the district court. As soon as that case is filed, it's brought down to Mickey, okay? He actually schedules, schedules it for a hearing, okay, on the TRO and the temporary orders. I sign the notice of hearing, okay? It's also called a fiat. I sign that and it goes back to the district clerk's office, okay? Now, at that point, it's docketed because Mickey has set a docket. Now, if we can't get in the Tyler Odyssey, he can't do that, okay? He's not able to do that. And he's not able to move that entire docket consisting of one to 20 cases. He can't move that over to our website so that lawyers will have access to it, nor can he print a docket, okay? It's all, you know, it all have to go back to the district clerk, nor can he go in and change a docket setting, because we have a lot of times lawyers won't get, you know, the constable's office won't get service, okay? And so we'll have to extend the TRO and reset the hearing. Well, he does that through a docketing system, which he can't do unless he's a user for the Tyler system. Does that make sense?
But didn't two months ago, didn't Mr. Sharon come to court and we approved this two months ago? Stan, I thought.
I, I think.
This was, this was for follow-up. I think the court at that time said, we'll go along with that if you can find a budget for it.
Oh. So this oh seven three four five seven four ninety-nine budget, or.
Budget.
Four eighty-nine budget is, is.
That's a line that we can take.
I mean.
Very useful insight from the judge that, that this law will allow that being expanded for that purpose.
So we don't need to do anything? Did we already pass it two months ago?
We need to, in fact, just pay it.
Just pay it. Yeah, we see you'd have the source for paying it.
Yeah, I mean, we approved it based on the source, and you're just saying that you found the source.
I'll just make a motion. We ratify item four A.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Rome to ratify item four A, county court at law, on these two new user items. Anybody else have any comments on this? An all in, Tona? I do not know. I sign about 50 contracts a week, it seems like. I don't know. You know, I can't remember.
Jackie, will you, all right, then I'll, I'll take my motion back then and remake my motion and restate it is that we ratify four A, and if there's a contract that needs to be signed, when Jackie or Tona brings it to the judge, he has authority to sign that.
Okay, this judge, not that there judge. Okay?
I, I think I, if I remember, I saw on an agenda item, maybe a couple of weeks ago, authorizing the county judge to sign the contract with Tyler for my, for the two additional users. But I mean, I just, I'm going off memory.
We got so much Tyler in code order right now, so.
I think you're right, Judge.
All right.
Well, now on B, consider.
Do we vote on that?
No, we hadn't voted yet. Hold on. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Item B, consider and take appropriate action to approve purchase of iPad for signing blood warrants out of Fund 55.
Okay, little bit of history, real briefly. About four years ago, this county went to a no refusal county, okay? So what that means is if you get pulled over for DWI and you are offered a breath test, which they will offer a breath test under what's called a DIC 24, and you refuse to give a sample of your breath, then they will then say, okay, will you give a sample of your blood? And if they refuse that, we don't tolerate that, okay? So what happens at that point, logistically, is at sometime about two or three in the morning, I get a phone call at my house. It's the dispatcher. And the dispatcher says, Judge, are you available for a blood warrant? And I groggily say, yes, I am available. And sometime between two and three in the morning, an officer comes to my house out in DeCordova, knocks on my door. I let him in. I read the affidavit to issue the blood warrant. If there's probable cause in the four corners of that document that I believe that the person has been driving while intoxicated, I, I swear the officer in. I sign a warrant. It's a search warrant, okay? It's essentially a search warrant, and it's searching for the blood of the defendant, okay? So I sign the blood warrant. I also sign an order authorizing a third party to draw the blood of a phlebotomist or a technician at the hospital. So then, logistically, what has to happen is the officer has to go back to the law enforcement center. He has to pick up the defendant. He has to carry the defendant to the hospital, provide the order to the phlebotomist or blood tech. The tech then draws the blood and that's over. And then the person's transported into jail. Now, it took me about 45 seconds to tell you what happens. It takes sometimes hours for that to happen, okay? Now, those hours are critical, all right, because from the time of the stop to the time of the blood draw, alcohol is dissipating, okay? It's dissipating at point zero two per hour, okay? And so if you've got a guy driving drunk at point, point one zero out of 10, if it takes a couple hours to get his blood or her blood, it's dissipating. Alcohol is dissipating. So time is of the essence in these cases, okay? There is technology available now. I'm gonna let Ty tell you about that, because I'm not about to get off into the technology part of this. But what can happen is if I have an iPad that is, that is just designated for me for blood warrants, the law, and, and if law enforcement has an iPad with the program that Ty is going to tell you about, okay, then at the law enforcement center, I'll get the phone call. It'll wake me up at home. I'll turn on my iPad. Through some video chatting ability, I'll be able to see the officer.
Or wherever you're at.
Or where, I'm going to get to that in a minute. I'll be able to see the officer at the law enforcement center. I'll be able to swear him in. He'll be able to send to me the affidavit, okay? I'll be able to look at the four corners of the affidavit. If there's probable cause to believe that the defendant was driving while intoxicated, I will swear the officer in to the facts of the affidavit. I'll have that ability through an electronic signature to sign the warrant. He can then, it'll be out, Ty, I'll tell you, it's in the cloud, okay, whatever the cloud is. He'd be able to pull that, pull that warrant and actually print it at the law enforcement center, along with the order authorizing the issuance. And then what would have taken an hour to 45, an hour to an hour and 45 minutes, now takes about 15 minutes, okay, for me to do that. Now, what, what Commissioner Berry raised is a great point. If I'm not in town, okay, and sometimes I like to leave town, all right? You know, sometimes I like to get out of town. If I'm not in town, I've got to go through a procedure of appointing a visiting judge, okay, that will be available to sign warrants, because the Court of Appeals and, Court of Appeals in Houston said that I can only sign, I can only sign blood warrants in the county that I'm located in, and I can't get Judge McDougal to come over without an assignment to sign blood warrants, because he's out of Erath County. I can't get Judge Kressman out of Parker County. I can't get the judges out of Johnson County to come over unless there's an assignment. And that is a difficult, it's not a difficult, it's a little bit time-consuming process to get that done.
Not free either.
It's not free. And, and it's also, we're, it's time-critical. This is time-critical. So if I get the appointment, say I get the appointment of Judge McDougal, and, and I give, I send a notice, I send a memo to dispatch, okay, I'm going to be out of town between this date and this date. They call Judge McDougal, okay? Now it's not driving out to DeCordova anymore. It's driving to the county line in Erath County, between Erath and Hood. He'll meet him somewhere out there on the highway, sign the warrant and all that. Again, time-consuming, okay? This process, I can carry that iPad with me anywhere I go, all right? And so long as.
Big Ben? It will work in Big Ben?
It may not work where I go in Big Ben, up on those mountains. But some, yeah, it will work 99% of wherever Verizon can find me, okay? A law officer can find me. And wherever a law officer can find me, I can authorize the issuance of a warrant, a blood warrant, which only supports what my office and the prosecutors. blood warrant, which only supports what my office and the prosecutor's office have determined to be a no, we are a no refusal county, period, okay? No refusal. You may be able to refuse, but you're, we're gonna get your blood, one way or the other, okay? That's why it's called no refusal.
It's a vampire.
Listen, I know that A and B really go together, uh, let's.
B and C go together, yeah.
B and C.
B and C go together.
Yeah.
Because I'll need, I'll need that service.
Yeah, B and C, that's what I meant, yeah, B and C.
Hours a month, I'll need that Verizon service plan for that iPad, for that iPad. And you gotta understand, the iPad is designated solely for the issuance of blood warrants. The plan is solely for the use of myself and law enforcement for blood warrants, okay? So, nobody's gonna be using iPads to play solitaire or anything like that.
Will this iPad be at the, at the, at the law enfor, LEC, then?
Yeah, I'll let Lori talk to you about that.
I am going to, out of my seizure money that the commissioners gave me from the gambling proceeds, I'm going to supply iPads at the law enforcement center, one or more, for the officers to use, and a printer, and the supplies that go along with that. I cannot by law buy anything for a judge that violates the law. My office, county attorney's office, can't buy something for a judge. So, this would be, that's why this needs to come out of the county's budget, but what I'm proposing is, I, I would like to pay for it all out of, out of the money that, that you allowed me to have from that seizure. We just put the eight liners on Renee Bates' auction. That money is expected to come in sometime in the next several months. What I would like for the court to do is to authorize the purchase of this iPad and a year's worth of Verizon service, so we can try this and see how it works. Once that money comes in from Renee Bates, I would like the court to, to take that money, whatever the Verizon contract was and the iPad was, off the top, and then distribute the rest of it to the sheriff and myself, as we've already agreed. That way, I'm not buying an iPad for the judge, the county is, because the money that comes in from Renee Bates is the county's money, even though you've already agreed back in the fall to allow me to use it for this drug enforcement that we're doing. That's perfectly legal to do it like that. I think it's a good program. I've also, Ty and I have also met with Judge Walton, he's willing to do the same. We didn't get it on this agenda, so we may have to do it on the next court agenda, but with two judges having the ability to sign evidentiary search warrants from virtually any place, I think it will really help with our law enforcement.
Stan, is this court?
Five then, wait a minute, what is five then, if it's not Judge Walton and Judge Messina?
Oh, I don't know, what is five? I don't see it.
Authorized purchase of equipment for electronic search warrant pilot program through the county attorney's office for Judge Messina and Judge Walton.
Okay, well, that's the same thing then as B and C, only.
But only you can't buy Judge Walton and Messina's iPad.
I can't.
Right. So, would you explain, when you talked to me last week, about how the iPad will work at the SO, or Ty can explain, because you talked at one time about Granbury PD would have one, the sheriff's office have one, and then DPS has one, is that correct?
I, I would buy.
Or did we figure that out?
I would buy up to three of them, I don't know exactly, I think, since we've talked to Jackie, we, we've decided maybe we, maybe I don't need to buy three for the law enforcement center, but I could. And then, we don't have to buy a contract for Verizon on those, because they've got Wi-Fi at the law enforcement center, so we won't.
So, it'll be right there in the booking area, maybe, so maybe Ty can explain, we just need one for that deputy then.
Well, and, and I'm gonna do that out of the, the seizure funds that you've already given me, because I can do that for law enforcement, I just can't do it for the judges. So, I'll buy however many that is, it doesn't matter, you don't have to agree on how many that is, I'll take care of that end of it.
I just want the public and everybody to hear how that's gonna work, because I, when you talk to me, I want Ty to explain that, or you to explain, what they'll do at the booking area when they come in and with that iPad.
I have to tell you that Ty works for the sheriff's department as an investigator, he also has a, a strong IT background, and so, when I started looking into this, I called him and said, or we had a meeting, I said, what can you find out about this? And within a week, he already had the whole thing planned out, had already done all the research on it and was ready to go. So, I have to thank him for doing that, because that's, I understand basically how it works, but that's about as far as it goes. So, he's gonna tell you a little bit more about the nuts and bolts of how this deal works.
Okay, so, let's say we have a state trooper, game warden, any kind of peace officer makes an arrest for DWI, they take the person to the jail, they, they take them into the intoxicator room, they're gonna read them the DIC form, where they're gonna request a specimen of their breath. If the person refuses, then they could just leave the defendant with the jail staff, they could go into the sheriff's office area, and we're, we have an evidence submission room that's secure, and the iPad will be kept in there, they can prepare their warrant, they can call the judge and have him, you know, look at his iPad and see the affidavit in the four corner for probable cause. And then, the judge can initiate a FaceTime session, the officer will answer, they can see and hear each other, the officer can be sworn, the judge can ask any questions he wants. Then, once he's done, they hang up, the judge can electronically endorse the document, save it. Now, on the officer's side, he can just open that document, click print, right there in the, in the room with the printer that'll be supplied. Then, he's got his paperwork, he goes back into the jail, gets his prisoner, and then goes to the hospital. And the reason I say the law enforcement center is because it's a short drive to the hospital. All the local law enforcement that operates out of this county has access to the building already, it's a central place, you know, that way, I wouldn't have three iPads and maintain three printers. We already have Wi-Fi, everything we would need. Now, I am working with IT on some of the details, on whether we'll use FaceTime or some other method the county has, but the overall idea of how it would work wouldn't change.
Stan, do you see this causing any accounting problems, to get this taken care of when we get that other money back?
No, as long as we receive proper notification, Commissioner. If county attorney has already reviewed and said it's lawful.
Yeah.
So, it's just a matter of tracking it.
Okay.
Recapturing that.
But you can, you can track it.
No problem.
And I want you guys to understand, it's not just blood warrants we're talking about, it's any evidentiary search warrant, okay? And so, over the last, I'll give you an example, last week, this past weekend, I signed two blood warrants and one evidentiary search warrant for blood spatters, DNA samples on an aggravated assault case. And so, it's not just the blood that I'm, that I'm interested in and getting from the defendant, it's any evidentiary search warrant that's necessary. The thing that makes this program so unique is the time savings on the blood warrants, okay? Evidentiary search warrants, they're time-sensitive, for sure, there's no question about that, but the samples that they're seeking, or the phone that they're seeking, or the other evidence that they're seeking is not dissipating at a known scientific rate, okay, per hour. It's gonna be there, the blood is gonna be on the sheets, or on the walls, or on the carpet, it's gonna be there, whether it's that first hour, or whether it's the 10th hour, okay? Not so with the blood warrants.
And unfortunately, most drunks don't drive before dark.
Yeah.
Right.
So, Judge Messina, when, when Ms. Casper talked to me last week, we talked about, you know, you and Judge Walton both out of town for a Baylor ballgame, or whatever, you don't have to carry the iPad with you, other than in the trunk of the car, you can be in the game, they can call your cell phone, you can go out in the parking lot and do this. So, the point, it just makes it a quicker, cleaner deal, but you, so everybody understands, the iPad will be with you at all times, but you can still go to a function, as long as you can get back to your iPad in a timely manner.
So, long as I have cell service, you know, and they can call me on my phone, saying you're gonna, you have an incoming warrant to, to review, and so long as Verizon provides service in the area that I am for that iPad, I can have contact with law enforcement, okay? Sure can.
You know, the other thing this is, this saves, and we're always talking about.
There's been a lot of people.
The, the cost of one of our officers, sheriff's deputies, having to drive out to De Cordova and back.
So, we lose them.
Don't have to go anywhere. So, you know, you've saved, you've saved that as well. What I, what we'd like to do is run this for a year, see how it goes, see how much the, how the Verizon service works and all of that, and then revisit and decide whether or not we wanna make this a, a regular budget item, or how do we wanna fund it, maybe there'll still be money left in the seizure account, or whatever. But for right now, it's not gonna cost the county anything, other than to allow us to buy the iPads and the.
Licenses.
Verizon service for a year, to try it out, and then recapture that money out of the, the auction from the 66 eight liners, whenever that comes in.
Kind of a question for Ty, is Verizon the only source we have, or is there other sources?
That'd be a good question for Jackie, but Verizon is what most of our data services are, and I've found that it has the best coverage around the county.
I've heard enough.
And she brings a good point up, too, and I mean to say this, if this, if this pilot program works, and it, and it works like we think it's gonna work, then next year, in my, in my budget, I'll have a line for Verizon monthly service for the iPad. So, it's not gonna be something that I'll be seeking from any funds from you guys, Fund 55 or whatever, it will be a budgeted item, if it works out, and I think Ty was saying something like $36 a month, or $36 a month for the Verizon plan, and which is, seems to me, if, if you're sending out, you know, two or three officers a week to my house and back, that may, the gasoline burned up going from law enforcement out to my house, or wherever I am.
More than pay for it.
More than pay for it, yeah, for that service.
I've heard enough to make a motion to approve a combination of B and C, as listed.
And five? B and C actually, I think, is, is contained in the, the next thing, which was the.
Oh, the equipment, yeah.
B, C, and item five?
Yes.
Because item five is the one that's for, the one that you can't buy.
Out of Fund 55, Dick, so I think it's Fund 5, I mean, item five just has to come out of Fund 55, because of Judge Messina and Judge Walton, I believe.
Right.
Okay, then, let's just, let's just approve them separately.
All right.
So, as not to mix it up in a minute, make B and C the first motion.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Rohn, who's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever, any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed?
Now, okay.
Motion carried. Item number.
Now, I will make the motion for the purchase under item five.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Rohn, item five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, guys.
Well, we will give you a report and let you know how things are going with this, once we get it all up and running, appreciate it.
We're gonna trial run this for one year, right?
Till the next budget?
Yeah.
Probably.
Nine months.
Sheriff, consider and take appropriate action on the sheriff to ask for a jailer to be moved to transport officer step six.
Judge, commissioners, I know we're not supposed to talk about people and money and everything, so I'll beat around the bush here. We're, we've got a, a jail sergeant that wanted to transfer into transport, and what I'm asking for today is, he's a peace officer, and he's a mental health peace officer, and this is all from his past, but he's working as a jailer. But what I'm requesting is, we move him to, he'll be working as a transport officer, but he'd be paid as a jailer step six, is what I'm requesting. There's money in the budget for this, because we've never seemed to quite get full staff, we're always working hard to try to get there, always interviewing people and always trying to get there, so there's money in the budget to pay for that, to cover that. And step six, even though he's a, a peace officer and a mental health person, it'll still be way less than what we pay a, a peace officer, a deputy on the street. A deputy starts out at $36,000, so what this jailer step six would be is $32,460. So, we have so many more benefits as a peace officer, because of all the mental commitments that we do. A transport officer can only take a person that's under arrest, have the warrant, and transport him to the mental facility, or wherever they're taking him. But with a peace officer in, in regards to a mental person, if we need to, that peace officer can do a mental health, peace officer warrant, and take him directly to a facility. And we have to work with Pecan Valley Centers to get things done, but sometimes they're overfull, and they have to divert people away, so then, the peace officer has to take him to John Peter Smith, other mental health hospitals, and so, this person would be able to do that as a peace officer, and sign off on that warrant, and take the person directly there. So, we did gain a lot of benefits with a person with this experience and these, you know, already being a peace officer. So, I ask that we, you approve making him, he'll be a transport officer, but he'll be paid jailer pay step six.
Does that cause any problem with job description or job classification, when you're paying as one and functioning as another?
Well, he's hired to work as a jailer, even though he has got to hire, it's like somebody with a PhD that got, couldn't find a job and got another job, pays a lot less or something, I guess. He got this job as a jailer, so we're paying him as a jailer, but because of his qualifications, we could use him.
Okay.
In other respects, so it's worthy.
If you need to.
If we need to, it's definitely worthy of that. He's, he has came from being a jailer sergeant, and going to just transport, which I don't have any sergeants over transport.
So, would that leave you a hole in your jailer's positions, or?
Yeah, it'll leave us a hole for a sergeant, and I believe Captain Brown is working on promoting a person, and we're in that transition of always trying to look for people and hire more people for the jail.
So, we have an opening in this position, right? Okay. Not doubting you, just making sure.
So, I entertain a motion to approve the sheriff's request.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Rohn, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Consider and take appropriate action regarding a request to purchase a desk workstation for the treasurer's office, not to exceed $1,000.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to clarify something. It was on the advice of the purchasing agent, Nelda Walters, that the wording be the $1,000. I would never pay that much for a workstation for my office, I just wanna clarify that, but that was the wording that was recommended I put on this agenda. I sent you all an email explaining this last week. We have worked with the same workstations in our office, they were there when I got there 13 years ago, they were there two terms prior to me. If we move any of these workstations again, they literally are going to fall apart. One of the workstations we have came from Stan's home, he loaned it to us. Now that you all have given us a fourth employee, me being one of the four, we really need a workstation that will accommodate a computer. What we've got is his home desk, and it is not set up or geared for a computer. The maintenance and IT have come in and tried to put the workstation, tried to make it work for the last couple of years, it's broke on us several times. It, it's time for us to move forward and get another workstation.
And give Stan's his back?
Yes. It's nice, but.
Pardon?
Can I put it in your mind?
No, not my mind.
What I'm asking for, I talked to Cody Martin, and they came in a little higher than what I thought, but the other side of that is, he was able to get Linda Allen, the VA officer, a nice desk and setup for, I think, a little over $300 to $400. I'm talking with Cody and trying to work with him to find me a floor model, instead of a brand-new desk, and I would think that that would come in less than 500.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Kathy's request for a desk workstation.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rohn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you all very much. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the county roads item, A, discuss and consider approval for the court order creating the county energy transportation reinvestment zone, commonly known as CERTS, establish a base year, and appointing an advisory board. Chloe?
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. We're not really ready to set that CERTS zone yet, because the rules require that we have a 30-day waiting period between the public hearing and the actual establishment of the CERTS, and that won't fall until February the 6th. So, we're, we're really not ready to establish that. So, we're, we're really not ready to establish that. Of course, you, you, you will be the ones to appoint the members of the advisory board. The commission, the Texas dot commission does meet on Thursday, they have a proposal to extend the deadline of the application until, uh, we hear it's six weeks, from the current February the fourteenth date. So we'll know Thursday. I spoke with Don earlier, uh, we've sent Don some, uh, software that will help to estimate the repairs on the roads, we also sent him, uh, software to help him update his road report, as required by the, uh, application as well. So we've got some, we've got some time to do some things, uh, however, if the, if the commission does not extend the deadline, then we will have to take real quick actions in order to move forward. Today, we were, what we really needed to hear is, is how much the commissioners intended to apply for, uh, 'cause we've not received that word back from y'all about how much to actually ask for. Uh, we've talked about, you know, what your allocation is, and what recommendations are, we've heard that people are, are even doubling, uh, their, their initial allocation request. Uh, our company is encouraging at least a fifty percent, which would put y'all right at a million dollars from the six hundred and forty-five that you have, and, uh, we estimate that that could probably do about eight miles, uh, two miles in each precinct, if that's how you choose to set it up. Uh, I think we were kinda, and sort of in an agreement of where the CERTS will be located at the public hearing, uh, again, we can't really establish that until thirty days later, so...
Chloe?
Yes, sir.
We've had some problems with that last grant, as you're well aware of.
Yes, sir.
The tornado deal. And I feel Don and Stan's pains, what they have to go through every time these grants come up. And I've got a big question mark right now, if we wanna continue doing this, and having to put the burden on Don, and I'd do some, uh, back checking on some stuff from the tornado deal myself, and is this gonna be the same ongoing thing when we go into this thing?
It could, it could end up that way. It, it certainly could.
What are the chances of us gaining approval if we increase that amount? I mean, if everybody increases it, obviously it's gonna be well over what they've set aside for total grant amount.
Well, that, that depends on the number of counties that choose to not get in, or get in as well, too. No, no one really knows that. I mean, no one's gonna know what the request is gonna be until the application's hit. And if you're, if you're, if you're scaled back, the way you're supposed to fill out that road report is that you establish priorities of which work gets to be done, and then you would just stop at that, whatever level that you were funded.
Why are so many counties opting out of this grant?
A lot of, a lot of us, like the county I live in...
They were gonna get a hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars, total.
E-R-A-F county was real low.
Yeah, and it just, they, they just said they don't wanna go through all the work that it takes to play the game for a hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars.
It, it kinda was on the basis of how many whales were in the county, wasn't it?
At a certain, at a certain period, and overload permits, and that sort of thing.
E-R-A-F county had dump stations, not whales, so they didn't apply...
Overload permits also figured into it.
Anybody else have anything for Chloe?
So we're not, we're not gonna do anything on this today, is that we're not gonna, we're just gonna table it, or what?
Well, it is, needs, well, we can table it, that's up to you guys, but what he wants to know is how much we're gonna apply for, that's what he needs to know.
Well, like James said to me, though, that, you know, the works right now, it seems to be on Don and Stan for this prior grant, that's three hundred and fifty thousand for the Texas Department of Agriculture. We were told one thing, when they were coming down here and sold us the, Grant Works sold us the program, we had, we kept all those records, now we're reinventing the wheel. I mean, Stan never complains, but he's pulling his hair out, and I've seen it through emails, and he's upset about having to go back and reinvent the wheel. And, you know, we gonna have the money to go out and do, and ask for a million dollars, and get the million dollars, and go, and Don go out and build two miles of road, and redo miles of road, and then have a problem, and a slow pay at the state level, or, as I'm finding out, when I call Tex, Texas Department of Agriculture, it's Grant Works that's making us re-jump through the hoops. I mean, we're gonna fill out their forms, and that's all what we were told from the get-go. I mean, we, we did exactly what LeAnn said, and I know you, we have one person, and you're a different person, but there's a sired taste, I believe, and that's just me speaking, about, you know, every time we have a grant, it's all green and rosy up front, and we get to the end to get our payback, it's not what it seems, or they, or this, or whoever's submitting that grant wants to find every obstacle to hold back the money. And, you know, unlike Jeff, I mean, if it's such a great deal, I'm surprised a lot of these counties are opting out of it.
You gotta remember, Chloe, this, to us, feels a lot like the courthouse, all over again.
Yes, sir.
You know, and once again, if the state legislators thought it was such a grand deal, and we were having road problems, why didn't they just distribute the money to general budgets for us to fix our roads? But instead, once again, they added fifty thousand things and hoops to jump through, to get paid back for what damage is being done by the state, I mean, by gas and oil and water trucks.
Yes, sir. I, I do a lot of, uh, project, uh, employee interviews, and that sort of things, for current Texas dot project, current Tex, Texas dot projects, and it, there are a lot of hoops to jump through, to, to satisfy the requirements of the, of the grant.
The way I understood it was, we start on this thing, say we hire somebody to do some of the work, which we gotta do twenty percent, right?
Yes, sir.
Do twenty percent.
An eighty-twenty grant, right?
We hire this work done, we start turning receipts, of course, this is the same story we get every time, when we start turning receipts, we should be getting our money, right?
They're, they're saying thirty days turnaround, is what Texas is saying on this program, that you'd be paying thirty days late.
I hate to miss off, but I hate to miss a deal like this, but we can't afford to tie up a million dollars and not get the money back with the same budget year.
Exactly.
And as far as the work is concerned, I mean, even if we were funding this ourselves, the work still falls on Don and on Stan. So, I, I guess, my opinion would be that if we have the opportunity to gain this money for the, for the benefit of the citizens, and getting better roads, or some roads improved that are not now improved, we need to take the recommended amount that he's seen from other places, in this case, a million dollars, and get the application process moving.
Well, the recommended amount's six hundred and something thousand.
Your allocation is six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
And they was recommending that the time to go up to like thirty to fifty percent.
Yes, sir.
And that'd equal about a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
I would, of course, you, you told us the other day, anytime we're ready to get out, we can get out, right?
Yes, sir. Up until February the fourteenth?
I'd like to consider...
That's still the date.
...staying on top of this, and, and checking into it more.
Okay. I plan to visit with Don as soon as the meeting is over.
But I feel Don and Stan's pains, and we have to go through that, and Don's trying to hit Road Ops money up, and we can't get that money back.
Yes, sir.
I agree, but I still think we need to pursue it.
Yeah, we do, and if we decide, uh, he's, stop asking this, and if we decide this is not for us, we can get out.
It's not like this is money we're getting free, it's money we've already sent to Austin.
Right.
So I think if we can, chance of getting it back, we go for it.
I would like to make the recommendation, we continue on with this.
And what amount do you wanna ask for, is what he needs to know?
Five million dollars, if the court is good on that, too.
I, I would agree, I'd second that motion.
Heard a motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan, that we, uh, allow Chloe to continue on with, uh, well, Grant Works, rather, at a million-dollar level on the roads. Any further discussion?
Texas Department, uh, Texas Transportation Co, Commission meets the twenty, the next week, or this week?
I believe they meet Thursday, the thirteenth.
So if they extend it, you'll let us know that?
Sir, absolutely.
But the fourteenth is, is a drop-dead day, we forget out if we want out?
February the fourteenth, yes.
Okay.
And we have, you know, we'll have another commissioners' court, obviously, to adopt the items that were on the agenda for today, so we'll, we'll resubmit that to, uh, Mary as well.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Then all in favor?